Welcome all you listeners out there to this week's episode of the State of Greater Western New York Report. I'm Chris Carosa and we are going to be talking more about what's been going on with this school board movement. It's called many different things. We've got a couple of community organizers who are going to be speaking to us about what actually occurred in the Greater Western New York region at the various school board races this spring. And this is all in anticipation of next week's Greater Western New York Town Hall Meeting. That's right, it's a virtual meeting. You'll be able to attend and I'll be putting up on the screen towards the end of the show how you can get your free tickets to watch and participate in this virtual movement. Again, we're going to be talking this week with community organizers on the State of Greater Western New York Report, which as always is brought to you by-
Each week our community makes history. Each week you make history. And each week, there's only one source to turn to for the first take on history. You know what that is? Subscribe to the Sentinel right now to discover the history being made in your own backyard. The Ben and Honey Light Falls Live Sentinel. More than just your news, it's your history. Welcome everyone to this edition of the State of Greater Western New York Report. Join us each episode as we discuss fantastic topics ranging from history to science to the strange and the wonderful, as well as the treasured spirit with which our region has a fused America. We challenge you to consider all things Greater Western New York, from our region's very beginnings to how it inspires, how it empowers, and why it is so admirable. Here's the host of the State of Greater Western New York Report, Chris Carosa.
Hi there everyone and welcome again to this week's episode of the State of Greater Western New York Report. We've got a couple of guests today, starting with Cherie Stuhler. She is from the Monroe County area. Cherie, Cherie, tell us a little bit about yourself first, before we get into the details of what we're going to be talking about. Just let our listeners know how you came into this topic area.
So I have worked in education for the past 17 years and prior to that had worked in adolescent rehab. So I really decided that there had to be some changes and something more that could be done to help these kids before they ended up in rehab, in jails. And so I went into education with all of that in mind and how could I help? So with a background in counseling and then getting a degree in education and working with that, I tried inside and to see how the system worked and then which ultimately ended up leading me to run for school board in my town. That's a little about me.
Can you tell us more about the broader movement and how you got involved with that? I see that you're listed as being a participant in this Fight for Family. Tell us a little bit about that and maybe how things started in there.
So as we really started through COVID to hear outside of just what we would hear in the school walls of what was being taught and what was being told to these kids and that whole teaching them this victim mentality and not being able to succeed and the changing of the curriculum, which ultimately had started with Common Core, making things dumbed down and not teaching the way they could. So it kind of exposed it all because now the real world understood why you would go to the store and you would see these kids that couldn't do basic math. So that kind of fueled the parents to really get involved. And then actually hearing some of the things that their children were being taught through these online classrooms, it was very shocking to many parents of hearing these lessons that were being taught to their kids because the one thing that never changes throughout history is you can ask your child how their day went or what they learned and their standard answer is going, always going to be for most of them, nothing. I learned nothing.
Okay Sergeant Schultz. So you've mentioned something that's actually pretty interesting and that's that although parents may have been say, a little bit curious or say low level awareness, it wasn't until COVID and the remote classrooms that parents actually got to see this. What were some of the reactions that you saw in parents when they suddenly, when this suddenly became really obvious to them? What was going on? How did they feel when they saw that?
There was a lot of shock and disbelief and a lot of feeling helpless and not being able to see what was going on with their child. So I apologize for mine photobombing this whole thing.
That's all right. I took your name away just so everybody could see your pretty face. So go ahead.
Um, so you know, and then there's this parents feeling guilty for not knowing that this was going on. So there were so many emotions that were coupled in with all of this. And so everybody kind of stepped forward to see what they could do. Meanwhile, it also had a lot to do with how much your district had already quietly convinced parents that what they were doing was okay because they had already added in all of these policies and changes and had convinced people and spun them so that they were a wonderful thing. And if you weren't willing to take the time to listen or be educated on it, then you were just kind of went to the other side where you were, you decided that we were all just crazy and that this is what kids should know.
We've got Nancy Ordacheli. She's returning. She's been a guest previously on this show. Nancy, can you kind of give us a little bit for the benefit of the viewers who are new? Give us a little bit of the benefit of your background and the organization that you're involved with.
Sure. My name is Nancy Ordacheli. I'm the president of the Constitutional Coalition of New York State. We're just an activist group here in Western New York outside of Buffalo, New York. And we focus on education and activism and networking with other grassroots organizations. It's how I came to know Cherie and the awesome patriots in Monroe County and up north. And we just fight for freedom for all, no matter what your political affiliation, your gender, your, what you identify as, your race. And that's what we do here. We're not, we're not a not-for-profit. We're not really registered as anything. We're just a group of concerned citizens who want to fight for the freedom for all.
So, and I'd like to remind the viewers that Nancy's organization isn't just limited to this particular topic that we're talking about today with regard to school board. But Nancy, can you tell us a little bit about that topic? Maybe what, similar to what Cherie told us about the reaction of parents who became involved? What really spurred them on and what was their initial feelings when they, when they had this little impetus behind them?
So we all can agree that lockdowns were excessive and that quarantining and the pandemic and the response to that was out of control and an overstep and overreach of government. However, there are some good things that came from that. And I think one of the things that came from that is the awareness that parents now have as to what's being taught in schools, what's happening with your tax dollars as far as public school funding and where that's going because school then was streamed into the homes because of virtual learning and parents were getting a firsthand experience as to what was really going on in schools, what was being taught. And people started paying attention. They had nothing else to do. They were home. They were watching their kids learn and they started getting involved. And I think people were shocked as to what was being taught and to as far as the funding, where the funding was going, the control, how much control the state had with your public schools, that the control truly was not resting with the parents and with the actual school. It is the state. And you're correct in saying that we don't really, this isn't our only focus. It's not even our main focus, which is why we network with people like Cherie, people like Reese Perry in Franklinville. She's heavily involved in the education portion of freedom. And they, I defer to them a lot with this subject because we are spread thin with the other subjects. That's the importance of unity though.
Thanks Nancy. Cherie, tell us a little bit about, a little bit more about the organization that you're part of. When did it start? And did it, did it start really just as say, a chance for people to say relieve things, thoughts out of their mind? Or did it really start initially with the idea of running people for school boards?
So we really started because we, I mean, I started because I saw a need for people to get their feelings out in an appropriate, safe manner and kind of feel that they weren't alone in this. So I saw that need and it started because there was all of these little community people that came up and they just had these little events in their town. And then I kind of brought everyone together under one. And with that, under the one, we realized that what we were saying was there is way too much control over our kids, our family, and what can happen. So with the schools coming out and seeing what was going on with that, that became the big focus eventually with the school. But all the mandates and everything that happened, people were concerned for their kids. Their mental health was struggling. It was, it was a mess. And so they needed a proper way to be able to handle that. And that's what we tried to do with them.
So Cherie, what is the geographic footprint for Fight for Your Family? Is it, is it limited within Monroe County? Does it extend beyond Monroe County? How, what is the, what are the school districts that it really is involved with?
So it's not limited within Monroe County. And you know, we tried to work together throughout the whole state. It's been an interesting thing because this has connected people that he never would have connected otherwise if it had not been for COVID. So it kind of became a statewide thing. And the whole Fight for Your Family was a whole statewide initiative that we had done. That's kind of where, and it's stuck. And it really stuck here in Monroe County because everyone that was speaking out or standing up said, this is essentially about my family. So it connected everyone across the state. So we have people from all over, not just in Monroe County. And the school board thing, people from multiple counties started running and trying to make a difference somewhere and do something productive.
Nancy, you said that you've worked with all these other organizations. How did that process go about? Did they come to you? Did you actively seek them out? Or was there just something that happened simultaneously that brought everyone together?
A mixture of everything. I met Cherie. She called me out of the blue one day. I think it was because she might've seen our Facebook page when everybody was looking for help and for people who were like-minded. And my phone number is attached to that page. And she invited our group out to an event. And then through different avenues, other people just started reaching out and calling. And the Fight for Your Family initiative started in December, I believe. And we had united with Robbie De Niro and Kelly Hunter from Athletes Unleashed here in Western New York. And then we all organized with another group called the People's Coalition for New York, who are kind of an umbrella group for a bunch of grassroots organizations. So we were able to connect with other people through them. And we just, we worked hard. We, none of us get paid for this, but we believe in this cause so much. It consumed our lives 24/7 in October, November, December, up until today. And we, we believe so much in the family and we believe so much in freedom that like Cherie said, it just caught on especially in her area. And it's just networking. It's just looking for like-minded people, attending people's meetings, keeping in contact through social media, through phone calls. And we had a big rally here in Buffalo for Fight for Your Family. And everybody came from our, you know, this region and from Monroe County all the way down to Chautauqua County. And we had a huge rally and it just took off from there and it stuck. And people's eyes were opened to the plight of our children in these schools and what's going on. And I think once you get moms involved, that's when you start seeing things happen. We even, you know, reunited with Moms for Liberty as well. So it's, it's a unified effort.
That's right Nancy. Thanks. Well, we're going to take a break here, but I want to remind the viewers who are watching this live, since we do rebroadcast this, but if you're watching live right now and you have a question for our guests, please put it in the chat and I'll be able to refer to that question and see what they answer. We're going to come back after the break, talk a little bit more specifically about what happened within the school districts that our guests for next week's Town Hall come from. So we'll be right back after this message.
Through the mists of time, nature and man have both created and buried treasures beyond the imagination. With the ages, these riches slowly dissolve into mere myths until they are forever forgotten. But there are those brave souls who tirelessly cling to the truth, ever seeking to discover the undiscovered, to reveal what has always been there, to uncover the hidden gems of a land thought forsaken but loved by millions. Fifty Hidden Gems of Greater Western New York. Discover the secrets in your own backyard. Buy your copy now at fiftyhiddengems.com.
Welcome back to the State of Greater Western New York Report. I'm Chris Carosa and we're talking with a couple of community organizers in the Greater Western New York region who have played some role, at least in these past school board elections. And I want to tell you that we're going to be having this Town Hall Meeting next week. Anybody could go. We've got three newly elected school board members from three different school districts to tell us a little bit about the process by which they got elected, maybe what were the issues that were pushing them forward and what they expect to get out of it. If you would like to attend that, I just put up on the screen here, go to greaterwesternnewyork.org and sign up, register. It's free. You'll get the super secret online invitation for the virtual Town Hall Meeting, which takes place next Wednesday, August 3rd, beginning at 7:30 PM. It's going to start as usual with keynote speeches from each of the three participants, then an open panel discussion where you can ask questions, similar to the way you can ask questions today. And then finally, the last half hour will be an open meeting. This is like a typical Zoom meeting. In fact, it will be through Zoom, even though it's produced through a studio like this. Yes, we have the technology to do this. You're actually witnessing it right now if you're on live. And you could ask your questions amongst each other and see what other people think. So go to greaterwesternnewyork.org and sign up for the tickets for next week's Town Hall Meeting. So let's start off with this. Specifically, we had on reporters from last week who talked about two of the three guests, the Town Hall Meeting. Mark Kless from the Pioneer District and Jim Mikulik from the Iroquois District. What we didn't have is we didn't have anybody, any reporter who could talk to us about Mark Bonogario, I think is his last name, from Greece. And Nancy, you're not frozen. You could tell us about what you saw, at least in the districts that, that you were aware of. It doesn't have to be Mark's specifically, unless you know, do know something a little bit about Greece. But tell us what you know about the specific races that you saw.
Sure. No, I don't really know much about Mark, but I do know about Jim and about Mark Kless's race a little bit because they're more in my area. The, the school board races that I witnessed this last year were more intense than a federal congressional race. I've never seen people campaign the way that these school board races campaigned. And it got very, very contentious from opposition. And people put a lot of money into it. People were, you know, really trying to stop these regular moms and dads from becoming involved in the school board. And one of the things that people kept saying was they're not going to do any good if they're on a school board. They're only one voice. And if, you know, they got elected to a board that was maybe more progressive left, they're only one voice. They're not going to be able to make a difference. And my response to that was then, why are you fighting so hard and trying so hard to stop them if you think they're not going to make a difference? Because if that was the case, why did you spend so much money to try to stop them? Why did the unions, why did they spend so much money on advertising and mailers and TV to stop these normal citizens, moms and dads, from becoming a part of their school boards? And the things that I witnessed were actually kind of disheartening. But ultimately, we got some people in and that's all that counts. We got to win.
Thanks Nancy. Michelle, I'll get to your question in a moment because it's very good. But let's go back to Cherie. She's back on. Cherie, we're wondering about Greece. Can you tell us a little bit specifically because Mark Bonogario, maybe you could say his name better than I could, is one of the guests on the Town Hall Meeting last week. Tell us what happened in Greece and maybe what might have been unique about it.
So I think part of what, that one there, they were speaking, they weren't local and speaking out. They weren't, they weren't connected to some of these other organizations. And they also had kids in school that were active. So they had a community already built around them. So when the narrative came out that they were just, you know, trying to disrupt or they had another motive or whatever, they already had a proven track record of true. They were just normal parents trying to do what was right for their kids. So that really helped them. And even the third gentleman who did lose, he only lost by like 100 votes. And that was kind of what we saw across the board, which was kind of strange. So if you had kids that were actively involved and you were one of those parents taking them to their sports and things like that, you ended up coming in pretty close. But like Nancy was saying, fighting against the union was very difficult. So we had unprecedented numbers come out to vote in our school boards, which people typically do not do. But the amount invested to get more people out was huge. Greece also has a large homeschooling community and those folks actually turned out and voted in the school board elections, which helped tremendously of getting some of these normal, everyday parents into the school. So that also fueled that.
Very interesting. We have a question from someone in the live audience. This is a great question and I think this might be relevant maybe to Iroquois, just based on what little I know about it and that particular race. But it's not, when I say Iroquois, I'm sorry, not Iroquois, but the Iroquois Central School District. Are there, are you aware, either of you, aware of any school boards that have actually become more receptive to parents' input and their concerns? And if, if you are aware of that, what can parents do? How can they work to help the school boards become more responsive? So let's take the first part first. Either of you guys, are you aware of any school board that actually is taking this to heart when parents come in and aren't fighting them? Go ahead, Cherie. Say what you-
There, there definitely are ones that have become aware and are starting to listen and taking it to heart. So they all still follow the same standard practice of they're not going to openly say anything to you. But I know even for me and my district, my school board, we've had some really good productive conversations. And the best thing for parents to do is get their hands on this material and go and present it to the board in an appropriate way. To show up at these board meetings and listen to what is being said and what the board is saying and follow through. And then after the fact, go, go get the board meeting minutes because everything that's discussed prior that you don't know because they just use numbers is actually written out in their board meeting minutes that you can get your hands on. So it's, it's work. It's doing your homework, but ultimately it's protecting your kids and the generations to come. Doesn't need to be aware that most of these districts signed an agreement that's tied with some of this funding on some of the things that they're teaching. And so it's going to be hard to let go of.
This is actually a very good point. And that is, and I don't know how many people realize this, but it's not really the school board's fault for some of these complaints. It's really, they don't have any choice. And so it appears that, and I, in talking with reporters, talking with the guests that we're going to have next week, it really, it's important that people within the school district understand the best place to bring some of these complaints to. Maybe the school board is where you start, but the school board, it's, did you see this, Cherie or Nancy? Have the school boards actively engaged parents in a way as to direct them where they might be able to go with some of these issues?
I personally haven't seen that. The only school board around here that has been a little bit helpful, and I wouldn't even say it was the board, it was the principal, was the Pioneer School District. The principal of that district was very like-minded as far as freedom of choice and anti-government overreach. He took a beating for it and he did have to buckle after a little while, but he did encourage the parents to be involved. But other than that, I really don't know of any other school district or school board that is thrilled with moms and dads starting to come on board.
I will add that at our last Town Board Meeting, we had the supervisor of Livonia Central School District, who has since taken leave. I think he's had some family issues, sincerely had family issues, not one of those made up sort of family issues. But he was very active, along with a number of school districts, in fact, all the school districts that are in Livingston County in fighting Albany's, you know, health mandates that they had on the school board. So I would presume that perhaps Livingston County had a number of school districts that were receptive to this idea. And maybe we should get some ideas from there on what's going on. Where, where do we go from here? In your sense, we'll start with Cherie. What happens next?
So I think that parents need to actively take a role, whether that's just sitting quietly and listening in your board meeting or requesting the material that your child is learning. You really, we've sat back, that's kind of what we've been taught, and just kind of thought, okay, well they'll take care of it and I don't have to worry about it. I'll help them do their homework after school and that's my job. And we've trusted the system to do what's right by our kids. And what we've learned is they're not. And people don't even know how to get into their school board. They don't understand it's public. They don't make it easy. But it's doable and it's not a huge time commitment. So it's something, get in your schools and start volunteering. Going back to those things if you're capable of doing it, because until we step in with the information, they don't. The boards are never in our schools. They, when they are paraded through, it's pre-planned. Everyone knows they're coming and they only get taken to the pretty places. You want to see the unpretty places. You want to see what's really going on behind the walls. And it's not just what they're being taught. It's the violence that is hidden. It's the unsafe atmosphere of the schools. I'm in there every day. And, you know, every day I know I might not come home. I mean, it's, it's gotten to be that bad and it's very sad. And these are what our kids are living.
Do you have, is there a site that people can go? I mean, you did a very, very well organized, thought out punch list just there, but is there a website people could go to that they might be able to see this?
So unfortunately, no. These are all really well-kept secrets. And if you can't get someone that's inside the walls to talk to you, then you're not going to know. But what parents do need to know is every school district has cameras throughout their whole building. So if your child is the victim or the witness of an assault in the school, you have the legal right to watch that video and see it. And that's very eye-opening. And parents don't understand that they can access that. And that's important. And it's also important that you go on your district website and just look up your Board of Education when they meet and start talking to them.
Well, that's very, very good information. Cherie and Nancy, thank you two for showing up. It sounds like there's a lot that could be discussed at next week's Town Hall Meeting, Greater Western New York Town Hall Meeting. Again, to get that, you would want to go to Greater Western New York- Again, to get that, you would want to go to greaterwestnewyork.org. You can register for free and you will get an email the morning of Wednesday, August 3rd, so that at that evening's town hall meeting that begins at 7:30, you'll be able to attend, listen to what some of these town board, school board members say, and then actively participate in the discussion later on. Nancy, Cherie, thank you again for showing up. And again, if you are watching this not live and you'd like to be a part of our live virtual studio audience, you want to go to stateof.greaterwesternnewyork.com. Notice it's different than the other one that I gave you. And you can actually sign up and register for free invitations to this show, which is every Thursday at noon live. And if you're a part of the live audience, like we saw earlier today, you can ask questions of our guests and hopefully we'll get answers from them. So that's stateofgreaterwesternnewyork.com or tickets to this show. That's it for this week's show, folks. Thanks for watching. If you can't be there live, remember we always rebroadcast at 1:30 on our Facebook page. If you like that, you'll be notified when the broadcast occurs or our YouTube channel, subscribe to that likewise at 1:30 on Sundays, you'll be notified when this is being rebroadcast. That's it for this week. We'll see you all later.